Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, September eighteenth meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners's Order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension, the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first. We are live and remote today. I'm going to ask our president to join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joining us today, our county engineer, Patrick Higgins, and our business manager in Norfolk, Aggie John Wallace. They're frequent flyers with us, so they've voted, I haven't said from an interest to them. Roll call vote, call the order, roll call vote, Commissioner Stady.
President.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Shea is present. No executive session today. Before acceptance of minutes of the September eleventh meeting. Right on the agenda, before on the agenda.
Wait, didn't we say we were going to table that?
Table it?
I thought, did we? Did we get them? There was a, I got an email from Bill saying they weren't ready. They weren't quite ready.
On the agenda, but you're right.
Yeah.
All right, we'll table them at this time. Motion to table.
Motion, so moved.
All in favor? Thank you. Number eight.
Number five.
Appointments, I have none. Number five, that's number eight, number five. Number six, public comment. Each week at our meeting, we have public comment, whether in person or on the Zoom. This is the section of our meeting, so if there's anyone who has any public comment, now is the time to bring it up. And you may speak on any item you want to speak on, and then we'll check with Director Bronn to see if we have anyone contacted you relative to public comment.
No.
Last call for public comment. You've been very long, number seven. Wait a minute. We're missing something? We go from seven to twelve here.
No, you go seven to eight.
Yeah.
You've got seven old business, eight personnel matters.
No, it's not. This is my agenda of September eighteen. Okay. Number eight, number seven, old business, I have none.
Uh, no.
Seven A.
Seven A, do you have that?
Okay, I didn't have it on that one. But I see it here now, okay, we got public comment, we did. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Under old business. Vote to accept the Stoughton, Mass. Return of Discontinuance Order and Order of Record and Discontinuent Documents and Plan for a Portion of Page Street, located east of Route Twenty-four, between Route Twenty-four and the Stoughton Town Line. It's on our agenda. Patrick, I'm going to invite you up to the big chair. This has been an ongoing issue. We've been working with everyone, all of our engineers and lawyers and the town of Stoughton, and Patrick, where are we on this matter? And if we can go forward, we'd love to go forward.
So this one is the older, older one, it's was adjudicated by and voted by the commission back in January seventeenth, twenty-four. And all the requirements have been met at this time. So everything's been returned back to us as required, the required conditions, so the town, uh, county council prepared the vote to accept everything that was returned and then vote to order that it's recorded to registry, and it'll finalize the discontinuance for this portion of Page Street in Stoughton. So that is a pretty lengthy list of things to vote.
And Peter, do you have a copy of the vote?
Yeah, you want me to read it?
Uh, I believe we should get it on the record, if we have to read the whole thing or some.
I think you can cite it in reference.
Okay.
But I'll let Peter, if he wants to move it. It's a lot, there's a lot of votes.
Yeah.
There's several votes.
Well, we'll do it, that's all, I mean, if we.
It's due to the comprehensive this Page Street discontinuous, and the one that's, this is A, on today's agenda, and B, on today's very detailed, comprehensive discontinuances, they have a lot of moving parts. So county council thought it was imperative that we have everything spelled out.
Okay.
So all the requirements and conditions and everything, because it's more, usually there's only one or two, this is pretty detailed, so.
Okay, so you want, you want to read it, you want just to adopt what's.
I will, whatever the.
Why don't you read it, Peter?
I think, I could, Mr. Chairman. So you have, it looks like, first of all, just to make sure we're clear, it looks like they make five votes. There's five votes. It says voted, 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 voted.
Yep.
And I see that five times. Am I right?
Yep.
And four of those are relatively small. They are, they're just, they're easy. We can read those into the record. The first one is quite lengthy. I would suggest respectfully that my colleagues just make a reference to the description that the document references, docket two oh three seven, and it's spelled out.
This is two oh three six.
Mine says two oh three seven.
Yeah, there's two of it.
Oh, I've got, I've got another one. What's, are we doing two oh three six?
Yes.
Okay, maybe I think that's fact. We have more than four then.
Yes.
I stand corrected. So we have one, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five, six. We have six votes. Five of which are small, right? Or is it? It doesn't, this doesn't say voted yet. See how this says voted?
Yes.
This doesn't say voted.
This is the return, so it's listing out everything that you voted last January. It's listing everything that's been returned back.
Okay, hold on, so we don't need to vote that again? That was already voted.
Nope.
Am I right?
Right.
Right?
Right.
So.
It makes us to vote two oh three seven.
So the voting is on actually page three? We have to vote that?
Right now, we're A on the agenda was two oh three six. The other one that's ducked at two oh three six.
Right.
Two oh three seven will be the one we handle after this.
Right. So two, on docket two oh three six. I'm making sure I'm getting this right, you said. You want to get it right. I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, I saw.
Page, page three. So page three.
We need to make votes on page three.
Yes.
Those paragraphs that just say voter, 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 six of those.
Yes.
You with me on that?
Yes.
Do you want to go?
No, I don't have two oh three six. I don't even know what two oh three six is.
See, there's a docket up here. It says docket number.
Uh, two oh three seven.
That was, I had the wrong one at first.
Yeah, I give you this one.
You can start at two oh three, docket two oh three six.
Okay, yeah.
Today's.
Patrick, yeah, okay.
So I think you can paraphrase the return.
Okay.
I mean, we already voted it.
Right.
Correct.
And then we just have to go, and it's already been voted, so what do we do at the end for this one, Patrick? Two oh three six, what do you want us to do?
So, I may suggest, Mr. Chairman, for a sense of motion, that the county commissioners on this date, September eighteen, are going to be executing an agreement with the town of no, we are not executing, we're ratifying an agreement with the town of Stoughton. Aren't we?
No.
We're not. Holy, holy, you're going to make this hot.
All right.
Send the return of discontinuance.
Rick, you voted a order of discontinuance on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four?
Okay.
And now you're accepting the return, which is the first part? And then the rest of it is ordering and voting to have me file everything and.
Boy, we could have read the whole thing, I just read it. No. All right, so docket two oh three six.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept the return of the discontinuance order, which was previously voted by the county commissioners. That, that, that do it?
After motion.
And, and then you need to vote.
You need to vote each of those.
Right.
Items, okay.
And in conjunction with that, discontinuance.
All right, so that's my motion in general. So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then I'm going to go to the specific votes now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I vote that the fully executed general releases in a indemnification agreement in favor of the county of Norfolk, the three fully executed grants of the specified assignable easement reservations, A V and C, in favor of the town of Stoughton. Town of Stoughton's acceptance of the three grants of the specified assignable easement reservations, A B C, and the discontinuance plan shall be incorporated into the commissioner's return of discontinuance and recorded in the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. That's my vote.
I'll second that motion.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
What's the next one?
Next one.
The next motion is that, is to vote that in accordance with the authority vested in them by the Massachusetts General Law as Chapter eighty-two subsections, sections one, et cetera, the commissioners Joseph P. Shea, Peter H. Collins, Richard R. Stady, to hereby order that all expenses, civil process, notice, this publication, recording fees incurred by the county of Norfolk in connection with said petition discontinuance shall be paid by the petitioners when required by the commissioners and no later than thirty days after the county's written request. So moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
The vote, next.
Okay, the next vote is, it's written this way, ordered that the foregoing return in order be filed, accepted, and recorded, and that in a tested copy thereof be transmitted to the town clerk of the town of Stoughton, within which the limits of said public way described therein lies, so that the same may be recorded by said clerk within ten days in the books of records kept in said town for that purpose. So moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Okay, the next motion is that failure to comply with any of the conditions stated above shall be caused to revoke or modify the votes set forth above. So moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Let's see, the next motion is that Commissioner Shea or any of the commissioners acting singly or together is hereby authorized and directed in the name and on behalf of Norfolk County to execute and deliver in such form as he or she may approve any and all documents, agreements, and instruments necessary or desirable to consummate and effectuate the purposes of the action contemplated in the foregoing votes, the execution and delivery thereof by such commissioner to be conclusive evidence of such authority and approval. So moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
And the last motion for this part one is to adopt, ratify, and confirm all actions heretofore taken by the commissioners in connection with matters which are the subject of the foregoing votes. So moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
That completes what were listed on our papers as A and number, next is B.
Now, do you have to sign that document?
Votes or?
That's in that green folder.
In the green, okay, got it.
All right, so I'm going to give this one back to you, Patrick.
Thank you.
I wrote it at the top of this, because I wanted to make sure. What you wanted me to do.
That's two oh three six, correct?
Yep.
All right, so now I have to go.
Next, B. Vote to adjudicate the Stoughton, Mass. Petition to discontinue a portion of Page Street located west of Route Twenty-four between Page Street and Old Page Street Town. Patrick, briefly.
So this is the same street, Page Street in Stoughton, Mass. It's located on the west side of Route Twenty-four IMBETs highway, and the there's a nineteen fifty, the current roadway is located that everybody travels on, it's like nineteen in conjunction with the bridge that went in with the IMBETs highway. The new Page Street nineteen fifty-six town layout is on one end. A portion of the county layout connects that to what's known as Old Page Street, which is also a townway, so there's a a sub-section of the county layout that goes between two town layouts. And the proposal is to, we've had a hearing in June on this, and now the, we've worked out all the moving paths with county council on what we require conditions and requirements are, and now this is the vote for you guys ordering all the required conditions for the discontinuance.
Okay, do we understand this one, commissioners?
Yes.
Oh, this is. Go ahead, commissioner, direct us.
To further expedite the discussion and the possible motions, if I could recommend a motion for the commissioners to vote to adjudicate the Stoughton, Mass. Petition to discontinue a portion of Page Street located west of Route Twenty-four between Page Street nineteen fifty-six town L O and Old Page Street for the town. Upon a successful vote or acceptance of that motion, Peter has four votes that you'll have to take following that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. On the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Peter, if you'd be so.
Three to zero. Peter.
Okay, so I have four motions. The first is a motion.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Collins, this is two oh.
Three seven, docket two oh three seven. Okay, I'll make a motion that all said releases, the four specified assignable easement reservations, the grants of the four specified assignable easements, the town of Stoughton's acceptance of the four specified assignable easements in the discontinuance plan set shall be incorporated into the commissioner's return of discontinuance recorded in the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. So moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Uh, the second is, I make a motion that failure to comply with any of the conditions stated above shall be caused to revoke or modify the vote set forth above. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Okay, the next motion is that Commissioner Shea or any of the commissioners acting singly or together is hereby authorized and directed in the name and on behalf of Norfolk County to execute and deliver in such form as he or she may approve any and all documents, agreements, and instruments necessary or desirable to consummate and effectuate the purpose of the actions contemplated in the foregoing votes, the execution and delivery thereof by such commissioner to be conclusive evidence of such authority and approval. So moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
The last motion is to adopt, ratify, and confirm all actions heretofore taken by the commissioners in connection with the matters which are the subject of the foregoing vote. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, Commissioner Collins, if I can, that was on page four, there was four votes.
Yeah.
The, the first, the first page, all the subsections. If you, if we could generalize a motion to vote that, that's for the discontinuance with all the required conditions.
Right? How do you want me to sum that up, Patrick? Anyway, why don't you, why don't you kind of verbalize what you just said, and I'll make that motion, all right?
Okay.
You don't, you don't have to read everything, right?
I, I'm just going to touch on them real quick.
Okay.
I can, I can.
Go ahead, Patrick.
To suggest a motion to the commissioners upon the petition of the inhabitants of town of Stoughton regarding the discontinuance as shown on the plans prepared by Langen Engineering and signed by Ian Missouri, that the fully executed general releasing indemnification agreement is in favor of the county of Norfolk from each of the following abutters is delivered to the county of Norfolk on or before December twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. That's number one. Two, fully executed grant with quick plan covenants of assignable perpetual and non-exclusive access and egress right-of-way in utilities making gross over the discontinued area depicted apostle B in favor of the town of Stoughton from the abutter of IV three Stoughton Logistics Park LLC and not individually be delivered to the county on before December twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Fully executed grant with quick plan covenants of an assignable perpetual and non-exclusive access egress right-of-way in utilities missing gross or an entire discontinued area depicted apostle C. Apostle C, Apostle D, and Apostle E in favor of the town of Stoughton from Stephen O'Duggan as trustee of the one twenty-six Old Page Street Realty Trust and not individually shall be delivered to the county on or before December twenty, twenty twenty-four. And fully executed easement agreement with an easement area seventeen thousand nine hundred twenty-four square feet shall be recorded in the county registries on or before January, January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. It said easement agreements between the town of Stoughton and IV three Stoughton Logistics Park LLC to provide equivalent adequate and alternative rights of access and egress for the general public to pass when we pass over a portion of the new Page Street references made to the town stone planning, finding to, to, for a private way. By the portion of the area discontinued depicted as discontinuous apostles B, C, E, D, and E shall be discontinued as county highway, and the rapther shall no longer be a public way in title, and so revert back to the best to each of the director abutters. Portion of the area of discontinuous, depicted as discontinuous apostle A shall be discontinued as a county highway, and the rapther, only this section of the county way, so discontinued should be a town public way based on the town stone's request for the area being discontinued to be a town, a town public way. And then seven, the town of Stoughton's acceptance of the grant was grants of the four assignable easements specified above discontinued areas B, C, D, and E. The references to the discontinuous plan set that includes three plans prepared by Langen Engineering, signed and sealed by Ian Missouri P L S. Nine, recording the commissioner's return all releases, the four specified assignable easement reservations, the grants of four assignable easements, the town stones acceptance of the four specified assignable easements in the town way in the discontinuous plan set at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds, payment in all recording fees of the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds, payment in full of all fees associated with civil process notices, publication, and mailings related to the discontinuance, and four permanent grant stone, number ten, four permanent granite stone bounds will be withdrawals be set by the engineering company at terminals and angles of the discontinuance.
Okay, I'll make that motion with the understanding that was a quick synopsis by our county engineer, but the actual vote is based upon the hard copy provided to us by Patrick, so that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Patrick, is this complete? One and every, every, the other, second one is well on its way.
Yeah, so now, now the, the second one that we just read in two oh three seven, they have until the end of December, and then, and then the, for all the returns of the abutters. And then the, the town has to go to town meeting this fall, and we hope to get everything back from them by the end of January, and then I'll be back before you have you review the return.
Thank you, this is interesting, and, and county attorney Lopez also has a say on this.
Very heavily, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Shea, if you don't mind, these transactions require a fair amount of signature by the commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll start at the end of the table with Commissioner Stady
Okay.
to make sure they're properly addressed, thank you, sir.
We want to.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
We're doing the best.
Thanks.
We're happy to work with the town of Stoughton.
Stoughton will be happy. So half is done, right?
Can I say that is, that was not my shortest motion, so.
All right, that completes number seven, which was all business. The matter of discontinuances on Page Street in the town of Stoughton. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration.
Want me to read these right here while you're signing?
That'd be great, thank you.
Commissioner Collins, first ones are at the agricultural school.
Correct, okay, so the first one is a notice of resignation for Sean Denny of Canton as school finance associate, did I pronounce that right?
Say it.
Say it, thank you. Effective nine twenty twenty-four. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Here, the next four are for contingent employment. All as substitute instructors. The first person is Michael Shackelford of Walpole. The second is Quinn Espinoza of Framingham. The third is Karen Lumba of Marshfield. And the fourth is Matthew Glenn of Walpole, all effective nine nineteen twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it on substitute teachers, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is a motion to allow for the covering of L O A for Matthew Glenn of Walpole, Mass. As long-term substitute instructor effective ten three twenty-four. So moved.
Commissioner?
I'll second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the net, the last one at the school is notice of, a motion for notice of covering for L O A of for Caitlin Raftery of Walpole as interim director of special education at the rate stated effective eight twenty-six twenty-four, so moved.
Good question, second. Didn't we vote on it last week? Didn't, no?
No.
You did not, okay, I thought we did, recognize your name. I'll second it.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next are at the registry of deeds.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the notice of resignation for Jordan Freeman of High Park as senior clerk at the rate stated effective three twenty-two twenty-four, so moved.
Second. John.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
I'll make a motion that we accept the notice of retirement for Neil Donahue of Rentham as head administrative clerk effective four five twenty-four at the rates of stated, so moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
I'll make a move, we accept the notice of promotion for Patricia Rogers of Braintree, Mass.'s head administrative clerk, J G fifteen dash five at the rate stated, noting the previous incumbent was Neil Donahue, this is effective seven one twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Which you made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Okay, lastly, also at the registry of deeds, I'll make a motion to accept the notice of promotion for Margaret Brennan of Holbrook as head clerk at the, J G thirteen dash three at the rate stated, the previous incumbent was Patricia Rogers, effective seven one twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That completes personnel for today. Next is number nine payroll and expense warrants. Commission stated.
Mr. Chairman, we have four items. I'll move for approval for the warrant list of, um, nine eighteen twenty four. So I move approval of twenty five dash eleven. County payroll, the amount, about a hundred forty nine thousand fifty two dollars thirty one cents. So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote next.
Second, twenty four dash eleven, uh, subsection six payroll of the school. And I'll move the approval of the amount four hundred and three thousand seven hundred thirty one dollars sixty two cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third, I move twenty five dash eleven expense of the school. The sum of hundred forty six thousand six hundred twenty five dollars ten cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, uh, oh nine oh three twenty five, I move the expense of the county, the sum of eighty five thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars four cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That concludes the warrant.
Thank you. Director Cronin.
Chairman, um, after having brief conversation with the human resources director, I believe some errors were made under the appointments associated with the registry of deeds.
I was kind of surprised when the, is it only effective date or?
There seems to be some, um, edits, uh, excuse me, incorrect effective dates. And if I could call your attention to a cover memo prepared by the human resources director to these blue papers. Could I ask the commissioners to reconsider their motions for those appointments so that the effective dates more consistent with the uh, settlement agreement with the, uh, union on these?
And we have a copy of that.
In your packet. Yes, that's correct. Uh, specifically, uh, for the appointment of Neil Donahue, the effective date should be September eighteenth, twenty twenty four. For Patricia Rogers, the effective date should be September nineteenth, twenty twenty four. And for the appointment of Margaret Brennan, the appointment should be effective September twentieth, twenty twenty four. Apologize.
No, I, no, I, when did we get them before? No, I was curious because, uh, I think we're, we were trying to be from the, from. We talked about this last week.
We did.
Yeah.
So these dates are consistent with the, um, settlement agreement with the asking.
Do you want me to withdraw my motion and do it again?
Yes, please.
All right, so I, 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 I will withdraw uh, the motions with regard to Jordan Freeman.
Actually, no, you can't. You can't move for a motion. This was already voted. Technically, you can't do that. So I would move a substitute motion to amend the previous motion, amend the motion.
Okay.
And to make a correction, uh, scribbler error or whatever. So I'll move the notice of retirement for Neil Donahue to be corrected for the date to reflective nine eighteen twenty four. So move. Right?
Now, the retirement was the one thing that you didn't say. That you said Jordan Freeman was nine eighteen twenty four.
Hold on.
But I had this.
Wait, wait. Go ahead. Jordan Freeman is fine.
He didn't say a word about that.
We're only dealing with the last three.
You got Neil Donahue.
That's, that's on me. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, again, I'll make a motion just to amend the prior vote.
Okay.
Amend the prior vote. Do it as scribbler's error. And to make the date of Neil Donahue instead of four five twenty four, to be nine eighteen twenty four.
Okay, second.
Simple motion.
Second.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Good.
Nice job.
Second, yep, second. I'm making a motion to amend the, uh, date concerning Patricia Rogers of Braintree. To adjust the scribbler's error and to move that the date be nine nineteen twenty four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
And last, I move the motion to adjust, to amend the motion for approval of Margaret Brennan because of scribbler's error and make the date now nine twenty twenty four.
Second.
Effective date.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Same thing.
No, I was curious about that. And, but, okay, this is great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. That was awesome. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so that's good. But those are done.
Right.
Okay, nine payroll expense warrants is done. Ten, reported on the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one. Director Cronin.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, again, we have no awards this week to present with you. With regret, um, but I do want to inform you, uh, we did have a multi-county ARPA meeting this week. Each county went through their current condition of closure. Um, we're all kind of trending towards the same inevitable outcome. I think you know that Barnstable has largely, uh, awarded all their funds. They did so a while ago. Um, Plymouth is behind, uh, us a little bit, but Barnstable, Bristol's right in sync with us in phase. Um, you have awarded two hundred and eighteen grants to date. We have ten excess capacity grant applications in the portal that will wait until we discover any extra ARPA money, if there are funds to redistribute. I have six level one grants and six level two grants still pending. So as I mentioned, there are approximately twelve that are in the queue that will look towards identifying, uh, the remaining eight million or so dollars that are waiting, uh, for award. Um, we are very close to finalizing a, um, closeout plan for both Milton.
Thank you.
Wellesley. Brookline. And one more, um, these communities have kind of come around to their, their final plan a little later than the others. Um, you may recall, we were waiting for Brooklyn to prioritize the number of grants that they had placed into the portal. Uh, and they've done so. So as we continue to move forward, uh, I just want to let the commissioners know we're in great shape, especially compared to the other communities or other counties. Um, and, uh, we'll be monitoring how well these, uh, communities in the closeout plans obligate the funds as designed. That's all I have at this time on our block.
Any questions, Director Cronin?
Well, incidentally, uh, there's a government finance officers association. They have reached out to ask permission to have Clifton Larson Allen speak to their organization, I believe, in the middle of October to discuss, uh, their successful deployment of the county's ARPA programs across Massachusetts. I believe the GFOA views CLA's role in continuing cooperation, feeding information to communities on how to manage the final rule to be valuable. So Sean McGoldrick, who is our coordinator, will be speaking to that group in October.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Moving right along. Report for. Now I know where my phone is. Commissioner Flores from Bass. So it is official business. Twelve, report from procurement department, bid openings and contracting wants.
Aye.
Hello, hello, hello. Deputy Commissioners, thank you for having us here. So I get two. This copy of leases for the county, uh, first is for the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. They did a state contract pricing on it. And as far as I know, they are very happy with their service and John's arms out over there. And second, we have a new can. Excuse me, two Canon printers for the registry of deeds that went through the 30B requirements of sourcing three tempted quotes and they chose the Canon vendors that was the best fit for what their needs were.
Okay. First is a co- copy of lease for resigning up for Norfolk County Agricultural School.
Do you have the copy of thing in front of you?
You have a copy of it right now, John. Everything's fine, right? Okay.
Yeah. Or make the motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve, uh, the, uh, with the lease.
Yes.
Yeah, the lease. For, uh, with Toshiba American Business Solutions. For the photocopier machines of Norfolk County Agricultural High School. At a price of one thousand four hundred thirty nine dollars a month for thirty six months. Uh, basically for years, the total lease cost of fifty one thousand eight hundred four dollars. So moved. Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Next.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I moved, Mr. Chairman, that we approved the, uh, the bid to Canon via authorized retailer Marco Net. Uh, the quote was thirteen thirteen nineteen cents per month for two Canon DX sixty eight seventy printed copies. This is for a period of three years, thirty six, uh, months. For a, uh, lease value of forty seven thousand two hundred seventy four dollars eighty four cents. And the machines, service and maintenance is included. And leasing is subject to a, a maintenance charge of I don't know, four hundred.
Zero point zero zero four cents. Last half, last and half a penny.
That's fourth of a hundredth of a percent, right?
A penny.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Okay, I assume this is the same vendor also?
Uh, yes, it's true.
Their registry is previously happened.
Yes, it's the same vendor and the same cost as well.
Oh. Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have anything else from the procurement department today?
That's good.
That's it?
That is all today.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirteen. Annual burn grant. MOU for approval, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, each year, the county of Norfolk receives, um, distribution of federal grant from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. Um, this grant originates at the federal government to support law enforcement programs, prosecution court programs, prevention, education, corrections, drug treatment, crime victim and witness programs, mental health and, um, implementation of state crisis innovation, uh, intervention court proceeds and so forth. Uh, this grant is a formula grant. Uh, the county of Norfolk has been receiving this for the last several years. In this case, um, they direct the funds through the city of Quincy, thirty two thousand seven hundred fifty three dollars. Um, the city is unable to expend up to one thousand dollars administering the grant. Town of Weymouth gets twelve thousand two hundred and eighty one dollars directly. Again, administration of the grant will be held exclusively by Quincy. This is a classic pass-through grant. These funds, upon your approval today, will be sent to those respective communities. Thank you.
Any questions?
We motion to approve that.
Motion to approve burn grant.
Right, so I'd make a motion to approve the twenty twenty four Edward Byrne, uh, grant uh, to the city of Quincy in the amount of thirty two thousand seven hundred fifty three dollars with administrative fee of a thousand included. And to the town of Weymouth, the amount of twelve thousand two hundred eighty one dollars. Uh, for a total of forty six thousand forty six thousand thirty four dollars in total. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you. Number fourteen was actually all business.
Job, Bill.
Was on last week's agenda, trial balance for July thirty first.
Right.
Twenty four, there's a new copy for your bruise.
Right, thank you. Much better. I can read.
Much better.
Thank you, Joe Doria and others who did it, because this is a lot easier now. Great.
Delivered by treasurer.
Right, thank you.
Joe. Doria. Okay, any questions on the trial balance of July thirty first?
So I believe that we're removing approval of the total balance of fifty million?
Accepting.
Accepting, sorry. We're accepting. Okay, we're accepting the trial balance. And this is for as of seven thirty one?
That's right.
Seven thirty one twenty four, the balance of fifty million, fifty nine thousand eight hundred thirty nine dollars eighty nine cents. I will go next, Jeff.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the trial balance for July thirty first. Next. Number fifteen, fiscal year twenty three trial court schedule of costs for acceptance. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, last week, I notified the commissioners that we have been informed by the trial courts that our uh, schedule of costs had been approved. This particular effort, as I mentioned, is quite involved. Um, the line Tosca works very closely with, um, members of the trial court audit team. Um, in this case, it's approving, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty three submission. Um, it's a rather involved document, but if I could just highlight one item. Um, overall, after reviewing the contents of our submission and the approval of what was submitted, um, there is approximately thirty five thousand dollar variance on a four point three million dollar request. Um, that variance, uh, will be reflected obviously in, um, the actual presentation of receipts. Um, in this case, we budgeted, leave a little bit below that so there's no natural hit on our bottom line. So our thanks to Phil for again producing, um, a nice product with the state, uh, surviving, uh, their audit and, um, presented to you today for acceptance. This is the FY twenty three schedule costs. Uh, by the way, I did for, uh, budgeting purposes, I budgeted, I believe, four million dollars in aggregate for, uh, against this potential receipt. And so, uh, it's a little bit of a little trouble. Thank you.
Any questions?
Budgeted four point three million, excuse me.
Any questions relative to the court balance, trial balance? Commission stated.
That's good. So just want to make sure I'm clear.
Sure.
So according to what's presented here.
Mm-hmm.
We're okay. We don't, we don't.
We're in good forty nine thousand dollars.
Oh, good.
You go to the back page.
That cover Quincy as well? Did that cover Quincy? Is it all on court?
Uh, for twenty three.
Cause twenty three, was Quincy still sort of?
It was.
Maintain?
Yes, yes, because we sold Quincy for fiscal year twenty four.
Right.
Uh, which ended obviously. So yes, it did include.
Quincy will be coming off this like next.
This will be the last year.
Right, but this was Quincy and all of course.
Right. If you want to go to the last page, I'll explain. So the submitted costs for this were four point three eight five million on the bottom line.
Yep, we had it.
Um, the audited cost committed at four point three four nine.
Right.
Below what we'd asked by thirty five thousand, but we conservatively estimate what this number would be. And I believe I budgeted four point three. So in the real terms, our budget is to the good forty nine thousand dollars.
So your budget is four point three. And it came in four point three. Okay. So we're okay.
Yep.
And what did you say? I'm sorry, you've been budgeted for next year, what, twenty four, four million?
For this fiscal year four point three, based on this. We get these, uh, reimbursements eighteen months.
We should be fine, because Quincy's off. We should be fine.
What'll happen when Quincy falls off, uh, we'll see fewer dollars in, um, our reimbursement costs.
Yeah.
But we are collecting funds from Quincy through the state, uh, via a standard contract for our, for their occupancy and the support that we provide him. So we are getting real dollars, but I do expect to see a drop off once Quincy goes off of uh, the state's records as well.
Okay.
So we've examined the total costs and much of it is labor driven, so.
Oh, nice job by Phil doing that. That's great.
Thank you, sir.
Do we need a vote on this?
Please, acceptance of.
Acceptance of?
Yes.
I move, Mr. Chairman, if you want, I make a motion to approve the, um, fiscal year schedule of costs as submitted and audited, uh, for Norfolk County and dealing with trial court amounts.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Do you want a number or just?
Motion made and seconded to approve the fiscal twenty three trial court schedule in terms of our, for our acceptance. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number sixteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I wanted to give the commissioners a brief update on the procurement unit reform. Um, so as you know, we have, uh, engaged the services of Capital Strategies. Over the last several weeks, since Nancy's retirement, we've engaged their services to help us, uh, research the workflow, the policies and, uh, responsibilities within the unit. Um, Trish Bernard, who you've seen a couple of times working with Will Robertson, and Amy Putney, who has moved offsite, remote, as our certified, um, MCPPO person, done a nice job kind of researching and digging into the unit. Um, I've met with Trish several times and I do expect over the next two weeks to begin receiving her work plan, uh, which will be the basis of an internal control plan on how contracts and payments are made, assigned to responsibilities and titles. After that, I've asked her to look at our purchasing policy, which I know the commissioner has approved in my absence a few weeks ago. Uh, that policy is, um, largely unchanged over the years. It replicates a lot of chapter thirty B in the Mass General laws, which is fine. Um, but there's a question of compliance. And when you have a policy, you want to make sure the unit of government that, um, uses it is following it. Trish is going to examine each of the elements within the policy to identify areas where compliance needs to be, um, enhanced, um, and or tightened, as well as to make any further recommendations to the policy's, um, uh, use that might be um, advisable, given some best practices and so forth. So those deliverables will come our way, uh, within the next two to four weeks. Uh, we are actively involved in a, uh, job search. We just altered the posting for this position. Um, we've changed the, uh, uh, the, the salary range to attract more individuals as we continue to explore what, what is a very thin market for this particular skill. Um, but we are being patient because we have some work to do to fortify our policies and to get the work planning, um, hardened up so that when this person starts, they have a great plan to get going on. So over the next several months, um, hoping we bring somebody on, um, we have very large procurements that are looming. And I want to let you know now what is coming. Um, as the commissioners may know, the, the county has begun putting into the portal, um, grant applications that are county specific. You have previously approved, um, eight hundred thousand dollars for a building management system for the Dedham District Court. You approved, um, last week, two million dollars to reauthorize the Dedham Superior Court HVAC project. Um, we also anticipate, uh, at the high school, a, um, the agricultural school, I should say, um, an HVAC project at Kemp Hall. Um, and then finally, you, we are waiting for a study on the tennis court renovation at Walston Recreational Facility. Um, the Dedham District Court, the tennis court and the Kemp Hall are all ARPA funds. The, the, the last one is the HVAC that is a capital project. Um, the lowest value contract is expected to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the largest two million. These are large projects. Uh, we are actively working with our respective, um, architects and engineers. And over the next four weeks, I expect to start receiving their products that can be used to uh, prepare the scope and the bids for, for the street and for active bidding. Um, so suffice to say, the unit, which is going through some reform right now, over the next four to six weeks, is going to be very busy. Uh, putting these large projects on the street for your, uh, attention, hopefully sometime in late October, early November. The goal on the three ARPA projects is to have those contracts, uh, lined up and assigned and obligated before the end of December. I'm optimistic we'll get there. It's just a tremendous amount of work. Um, but the financial, excuse me, the, uh, the procurement unit is well aware of these looming deadlines and, uh, projects and, uh, they're all for it. So just want to let you know, there's a lot going on in the office, especially in that unit. And, um, this fall will be quite busy for them. Thank you very much on that one. Um, and then just a reminder, uh, this evening, we have our first supplemental, uh, slash advisory board meeting with the advisory board at the Agricultural High School. We'll be in here with the finance committee at five thirty PM, followed at six PM by the full advisory board. There will be executive session this evening. Um, and there are Zoom capabilities for those, uh, willing to attend via, um, the Zoom options. Um, the agenda is relatively light, um, but, uh, I'm sure people attending, they may have some questions. We haven't seen them since May. So we'll be happy to give them some updates. And I believe the chair has some updates to share relative to some recent conversation she's had with the schools regarding, uh, school budget planning. So should be a good meeting. I look forward to seeing folks at, uh, five thirty and then again at six this evening in Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, Director Cronin?
No.
Okay, moving right along.
Exactly, excuse me. The only presentation tonight, as far as the commissioners, will be as far as the supplementals, which I assume.
That's, it's identical to what you saw this week.
Nothing else, right?
Hmm, no.
Okay.
All right.
Number seventeen, emergency items or topics the chair did not reasonably accept. Expect to be discussed, anything at all.
Just to let you mention, if I could, for the record.
Absolutely.
Uh, I had a very, it was a very nice ceremony Sunday, Representative Board. We, the board has full credit on the, uh, there's a plaque on, on, you enter in and it gives a very very, no, a very nice recognition of the ARPA gift from the county commissioners. And each of our names are on that as well, which is wonderful. And then as far as, uh, attendance, it was Senator, uh, Jake Luzier, Representative Vaughn, who spoke personally about the need and the request to have us, um, please have in someone from Killie House to listen to the proposal in terms of if we could help them out. If there's some way to help them. So he was interested in that. And I wanted to see if we could place him on the agenda at any given time. So he was interested in that. And I wanted to speak to him, place him on the agenda at any given time.
If, if, with the timetable being as it is, we've got to have them in right away. I don't want to make any promises, but I don't want to hang them out there either. So if there's no objection, I'm going to ask Sean to, Representative Roy, right?
It was Representative Roy and Representative Boyne, both. Yes, both, both did.
Okay. Sure.
I can get you on the contact.
Why don't you run and go from there?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Collins.
Yeah, I just want to say that I did attend the, um, funeral service for John Sullivan, who ran our maintenance department. That was last Sunday. And, um, um, I, we, we were telling some, uh, county stories and, and they were, um, well received. But, uh, John spoke highly of his time working at the county and, and, uh, he's a, uh, a terrific, terrific family. He has so many, uh, grandkids and great-grandkids. It was a it was wonderful. And he was, uh, ninety-four years ago, uh, maybe twenty past.
Very nice.
Okay, last call. Okay, as Freeman said, we have a reserved advisory board meeting at five thirty.
Right. Move that we adjourn this. Do we adjourn the meeting?[1788.42]